Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We begin this morning acknowledging the death of former Councilwoman Jackie Carey, who passed away last night. Jackie served a couple of terms on the Oklahoma City Council. We remember her family with prayers this morning. We also will get started by hearing from Rabbi Barry Cohen, who's here to give us our invocation. He's with Temple Benai Israel. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Pat Ryan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Well, Mayor Cornett and City Council, I want to thank you for this opportunity this morning. Lord our God, give our elected officials the strength to consider the expectations and needs of every constituency. When we speak of faith, our God, we typically think of faith in religion. We think of faith in our belief in a higher power. But what about faith in one another? What about faith in government? We complain about the power and influence of lobbyists and corporations. We argue that no one is listening to me. So let us give each other the opportunity to acknowledge one another. Let us give each other the reassurance that we are present to each other. In addition, Lord our God, give us the strength to have faith in government, and may we refuse to view democracy as a zero-sum game. Instead, may we understand that what makes the experiment we call American democracy a success is the need to find common ground. During these times of political polarization, may we all have the strength, the determination, the discipline, and the faith to ensure that the center holds secure. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Call the meeting to order on Item 4, as Journal of Council Proceedings. Item A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for October 19th, and Item B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for October 12th. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 5 is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, there's a couple this morning. Starting on page 10, on page 10, under Item 8A, PC 10260, the applicant's requested that this item be deferred until the November 2 meeting. Again, that's Item 8A. And then moving to page 12, under Item 8H1, Item A, 6800 Lancer Lane, we asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item G, 416 Southwest 12th Street, we asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item I, 3209 Northeast 14th Street, we asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. And Item J, 1128 Northeast 19th Street, we asked that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll assess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have a motion and a second. Any questions about the MFA? Any comments? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Well adjourned, the OC MFA convenes as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There is one item. Any comments on this item from the PPA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Well adjourned, the OC PPA reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, are there any individual considerations? Okay, Sam.
Your Honor, I'd like to ask a question on B and AD, please.
D is a dog and AD?
Yes, sir. B is a boy, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And Alphad.
Got it.
AD. Thank you.
Yeah, Larry? Okay. Sam, you want to get started with E1?
Thank you, Mayor. This has to do with a bid we let with regards to spay and neutering contract with the Oklahoma Humane Society. Jim, I read the staff sheet on this, and I didn't see it, but I'm presuming that this, as it said, it went out to seven vendors, and only one vendor responded, the Oklahoma Humane Society. But this probably had to do with spay and neutering within the shelter. And if that's the case, that, I know that limits other community partners in their participation. And if that's the case, I don't need to know now. I'd like to know if that is the case.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the entire question.
The spay-neutering contract, Laura, was that for spay-neutering services in the shelter itself? There were seven requests, one out, and only one vendor responded.
It's my understanding that they can be provided inside the shelter, or that they can arrange to transport the animals to another facility, but that the provider is responsible for the transportation and that thing.
The shelter animals.
Yes, it's shelter animals, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely.
I know that, because that in itself just precludes some of the other community partners that we're trying to encourage. And I, it's just my hope, Jim, that we get back to looking at the opportunity in our contracting ability with some of these other community groups, spay and neutering, because they are helping us in target populations outside the shelter. And I see now that this is for shelter animals, but just want to keep us alert to the fact that we need to be continuing to look at those target populations for our spay and neutering contracts. Thank you.
Pat, Item B.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a question. This is a renewable pricing agreement to purchase, possibly purchase, I guess, an additional piece of equipment for the fire department. And it includes an agreement to pay 3% more than the price we had paid last time. And I was curious, does the price that we show estimated cost here include the 3% increase? And since there is a 3% increase, would it be prudent to go out and get bids for this piece of equipment, perhaps, if we do go ahead and find the money to buy?
When this item was bid, it was bid as a renewable agreement, like our other pricing agreements, with a, and the lowest and best bidder did bid an escalation of 3%. So it is a renewal in accordance with their original bid.
And we have to accept the 3% increase?
If we're going to renew the agreement.
I understand that, but it's, that's my question. Would it be more prudent to go out and bid for this all over again, if we can do better than the 3% pricing?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you. It's just a question that I think we just need to look at these pricing agreements real carefully before we act on them.
Mr. Ryan, we look at those very closely as we go out. We had an issue that we dealt with the fire departments just last month about the same thing, on whether to go out to bid or renew a pricing agreement. And we do review those very carefully each time, especially because of the amount of money for a single fire apparatus. And I think amongst the department and the purchasing folks, they thought this is probably the best option.
Okay. As long as, I would feel comfortable if you could assure me that it was carefully reviewed, that's all.
I know they're carefully reviewed, because we have these discussions on a regular basis.
Very good. That Item AB. AD, Your Honor, is a project that involves the demolition of the old federal post office building in anticipation of the park.
Yes.
And I wanted to make sure that I understood this completely, that the money for this demolition is, and this is a question, it wasn't properly phrased, is it GEO bond money or is it MAPS3 money?
MAPS3 money.
Okay. Now, the actual purchase of that was GEO bond money, if I recall.
I don't believe it was GEO bond money. I think it was, I'd have to go back and check. It was maybe some TIF money that was available for that. I'd have to go back and look at that, Mr. Ryan. It was not MAPS3 money for the original purchase.
Right, because that was.
But it was being demolished.
The demolition will be paid for out of MAPS3.
That's correct.
Okay. What do we stand on some of the other MAPS3 projects, the simpler ones that I thought might be easy to fund and get started on, the trails, sidewalk projects?
Trails, uh, Mr. City Manager, it was GEO bond money.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sam, correct.
The acquisition.
Okay. Thank you, Russell. Maybe Eric could give you an update. We're making, there's a lot of moving parts right now in MAPS3.
We've actually initiated several of the projects. You know, some of the things that you may have seen is, of course, the convention center site selection, which is underway. The program consultant is underway, and the interviews were held last week. But we've also begun the scope of work development for the wellness centers. We have two of the smaller projects with the river begun, which is the night lighting for the race course and also the wind screens. But we're also looking forward to additional projects now that we have four of the subcommittees identified, and working through another list of parks and trails and things that are yet to come. But we are moving as quickly as we can on the knowns and the things that we can pursue now. Some of the unknowns, again, there's just not, the trails are not completely identified, and we're starting that process. The sidewalks aren't identified, and we're going to start that process soon as well.
Okay. I thought we were a little further ahead on the identification of those locations. That's fine. Thank you very much.
Larry, Item V.
Yeah, Jim, question on this, on these manholes. These are not just vanilla manhole, these are coated manholes, are they not? Could you give me just a little rundown?
Right, you know, with Project 180, we're going through a process, and so these are going to be special-dyed manholes, dye being cast dye, not dye and cover. And so there is an additional cost to set up those dyes, a one-time cost of setting those up. The castings are not particularly different from the cost of the regular castings. There's so much cast iron that goes into a casting. But we went through and made presentations to council in the past about that we were going to have different manhole covers for each of the different utilities as we go forward, and that's, as a part of the original plan.
That's right, I want to make sure that these are the utility coated, for want of a better term.
Yes, coated, yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments on the consent docket?
Mayor?
Yes, Pete.
I had a couple that I didn't, a couple of matters involved the Lafayette Park, Item A.
AE.
AE and Item M. That is a project that I had discussed with the manager a long time ago, and I had put a limit on how long I wanted to, that I didn't want it to last any longer than I had left. And we just barely squeaked in under the wire, it looks like. It's been, this had been five years in the making to get this done. That park's been there for, well, I attended grade school there in the '40s, and the park was actually an unimproved park. The city, the school operated it as a place to play baseball, but it really wasn't maintained as a park. And since Variety bought the old Lafayette grade school, they've proposed all along to turn that into a park to supplement the activities that they have at the Variety Care Center there at 44th and. So that's barely in my ward, right across the street from Meg's Ward, but it's a, it's a project that's been very dear to my heart over time, for obvious reasons. And I appreciate very much that it's finally moving towards some kind of completion. I see Mike Dover here, who's longtime involvement with St. Louis Cardinal Baseball and Variety Healthcare, and I appreciate him being here to see this happen today.
Mike's a great partner down there, and gosh, what a change with what we've been able to do with the park and what he's been able to do in the transfer formation of the old Lafayette Elementary School. If you haven't been down there, it's, what Mike's done is, it's a great, great community service.
Well, and it's certainly an example of a great preservation project in the way that they were restoring that grade school to continue to serve children and to serve the community. And they haven't put any kind of a monument up to the fact that I've attended grade school there yet, but I'm working on Mike to, after we get the park done, to try to accomplish that. The other comment I had, it has to do with the easements with regard to the completion of Southwestern. I was struck by the fact, the number of people that had contributed to easements, and to some extent, and also the project in Ward 8, the number of people that didn't contribute. It's always seemed to me that when we talk about the cost of government, the people that benefit the very most from these really nice street improvements by their property oftentimes are very generous and make donations, and other times, there's almost a million dollars worth of cost that the city's spending today on right-of-ways to improve vastly improved streets that abut people's property. And I just, I'm always struck by the thought process that goes through one person's mind that says, "I'll donate it, because this nice street's coming, and my property's going to be worth a whole lot more money." And then that next person says, "How much am I going to get paid for this?" And I think today's a really great illustration. There are a number of donors, a couple of attorneys that I know real well in South Oklahoma City, donated the easements, and some other persons obviously did not. So I want to thank those that did donate it, though. I just want to call attention to that. It always, it always strikes me as interesting, who does and who doesn't, and in fact, everybody, everybody benefits when these projects go in. And when we try to hold the cost of the city down, it seems to me that persons that are going to benefit the most, that is, the guy that's property abuts the improvement, ought to give it a long, hard thought before he charges the city for that easement. But the law is the law. So I just want to call that to people's attention today. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Ready to vote the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're onto the concurrence docket. Like, there's like 14 items on the concurrence docket. Any comments or questions on any of these? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to Item 8. These are items that require a separate vote. Start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 4. The address is 9700 South Sunny Lane Road. It's currently AA agricultural district, and it would become an I1 light industrial district. Pete, did we defer this up front? And it was deferred until what date, Francis?
November 2.
One week, till November 2. All right, we're on to Item 8B then. This is an ordinance to remove some no-parking anytime signs in Ward 2. Sam, you okay with this?
Mayor, I haven't heard from anybody, and unanimously approved by the traffic commission, so I would recommend approval.
All right, cast your votes on Item 8B. Passed unanimously. Item 8C is a public hearing. Has to do with our community appearance standards, and then Item D is a companion item. Any comments on Item 8C or D?
Two.
All right, we're voting on Item 8C first. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. How about a motion on Item 8D?
Two.
All right, cast your votes. And 8D passed unanimously. Item 8E is a new ordinance. Police Chief Bill Citi is here. This has to do with the definition of embezzlement.
Well?
He's invisible.
Eddie, you can take this.
Ed Hasbrook with the City Attorney's Office.
Here he comes.
I have two on here. Okay, the embezzlement ordinance is, right now, the only charge that we have is in the state. It's either a felony, which is over $500, or it's a misdemeanor state charge for over $200. So anything under that, there's no charge. And what we want to do is, we want to create a city ordinance that allows for us to file those charges under $200 in city court.
Okay, any questions for Chief?
Two.
All right, we're voting on Item 8E. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And Item 8F has to do with the Driver Improvement School.
Okay, the Driver Improvement School, we just want to really take it off the books, because I think this year we've had 14. There's so many private companies now that do it online for a lot cheaper than what we do. We pay, it's like $66 now. We had 14 people last year. We have to have a dedicated officer to teach those classes on Saturday. It's really not worth the time and the effort or the money for us to do it. So what we want to do is, we just want to take it off the books, where it does not require the city to have these classes, because there's so many other online services out there now that provide it, and most people take advantage of.
All right, how about a motion? All right, cast your votes on Item 8F. Passed unanimously.
Cheers.
Item 8G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8G? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes on 8G. Passed unanimously. Item 8H is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under H? 8H?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8I is a public hearing. This is a zoning case. It's in Ward 2. This would create a street improvement assessment district. We have two people that have signed up to speak. Sam?
Mayor, I see we've got folks on both sides of the aisle, and since this has been introduced, a question, we've raised the hackles of both sides. And I want to just see if I can quickly summarize it and ask Kenny if this is, Kenny Jordan, if this is where we are. In looking at the change in protest numbers since this has been filed, it's varied from 75% protest to, in the most generous way we can look at it, plus or minus 50%. And I'm going to ask about the challenge of the 50%, but as I understand it, if it's 50% protest or greater, the council does not have discretion. It just cannot be granted. Saying all that, before asking for the challenge, you know, when we get this kind of sides taking on something that could be, it could be, as I said, in a generous way, close to 50%, I don't think this is anything we want to cram down anybody's throat. And I think outside this easement, because I'm in a position today that is too close to approve it, even if it is 40, if it gets even below 50%. It's just too close, that we find, that we look at some way to find some resolution to this problem. It's just too close that a call to be pushing this down the throats of anybody, no matter what the call is on this. So I'm just, I'm disappointed, we're here to this point, and it's at this kind of debate in this close, that we can't find an answer. You know, if this were a typical street improvement district or business improvement district, as new districts start, we always get a few people that aren't in agreement with it and protest it. It's always been a very few, very few percentage. This is not that kind of case at all. And that's what bothers me about this, that we're looking for a place, trying to find a place 50% or better, to perhaps approve it, and I think it's just too close a call to be doing that. Kenny, I want to get back, though, to the legal standing. If it's 50% or greater protest, we cannot create a street district. That's correct. So what I'd ask for, is there a challenge to the 50% protest? 50% or greater? Pardon?
That is correct. They do not, there is not a 50% protest. The city councilor's numbers are still wrong. There are 12 people, there are 12 property owners in favor. There are eight opposed. And his, his figure, I can't, I cannot get, I talked with him yesterday, and I thought we had it resolved. I thought the number question had been eliminated. That's all I've ever heard. We only found out on October 1st that it was any problem. As nearest I can tell, that formula has never been used down here. Jim Hamel was helping Mr. Blalock with the application, and he hadn't, was not even aware of this number situation. The majority, by a long shot, of area, the majority of lots, there is, in Block 6, there is one and one-fourth person opposed, the rest of the block. The opposition, anyway, Mr. Bowman, the numbers are not there. They are not including everybody who has not opposed. They are only, and they, in Block 56, there's three people that they have not counted. Well, one of them.
Let's have the municipal council respond to that.
Do what?
By our calculations, there are now, there are three people that petition for the district. According to our calculations, right now, there are 50, or 15 owners of property. How much property you own is not significant. A person that owns 20 lots has the same protest as a person that owns one lot. Mr. McKee has had one property owner withdraw their protest. That means the protest is now eight of 15, which yields a protest percentage of 53.33%. Mr. McKee made me aware this morning that he thinks there are more property owners. I spoke with him, as he said, yesterday afternoon, and this was never brought up. We are working on the ownership list that he submitted to the city with the petition for the district. I'm fairly familiar with the area, and I believe we've counted all the property owners. And the protest is still 53.33% as of this morning, with the withdrawal of Mrs. Organ's protest.
Here's the deal, they haven't, they haven't counted two people. And that's, it's, two people is a big part of these calculations. We submitted an application, which is of the people who were applying, the applicant, everything in the city goes to land area, all the way up to the first, all the way up to the 1st of October, that's what we were operating under. Three people signed the petition. Not all of the property owners in there, it just required three people, because three people have the necessary land area, a majority of the land area, three people. Sergeant, Jack Sergeant's partnership, and Mr. Blalock and myself have a majority of the land. All the lots, everything gives us a majority.
To file a valid petition for an assessment district, you have to have 50% or more of area to be assessed. For protest, you can have 50% or more of area, or you can have 50% of the number of owners. The protesters have 53.33% of the number of owners. The area of land is insignificant for the purpose of executing protest. Once again, if they own 90% of the area of the protest, but there is still a majority of individual lot owners protesting, that's what controls.
And he's wrong on his owners. He doesn't take these two people into consideration, and he doesn't take the other, the other owner with Mrs. Organ who has withdrawn her protest. That's three people he doesn't take into consideration. He does not take into consideration.
The legal protest we have as of this moment is 53%. Even if that were true, and it changes it by whatever, plus or minus 50%, I'm not, I'm still not in favor if we had the discretion, and it's 48% or 49%, to not deny this.
Can I explain this to you, Mayor? Block 6 is surrounded by no paving. That, like I say, in Block 6, it has no paving. The block to the south... The block to the south is where one of the principal protesters is. That's Clement Foods. Now, that block has paving. He has paving. Leaving the people in Block 6 without paving, no paving. The block on the north, which is the other principal protester, that's Mr. Robert. He has an office building there and then there's a dog kennel. They have paving. So the principal protesters are ones with paving. They have what they want. It's unusual... It's unique. But it leaves the people in Block 6 where there is one and one-fourth person or one lot and one-fourth of a lot protesting. Where they're the people without any paving. And so that...
If this were denied, can the owners of this adjoining property on Lot 6 come back with a reduced paving district? Is that... Maybe that's part of the solution to this. I don't know. I'm not following this.
I think it's reduced unless you just go down to the one street, but that wouldn't be fair to the other street. I think it's all... It just circles a block. That's the paving district. And it doesn't circle it completely because the railroad is on the west end. And it doesn't... It circles a block except for the west end. That's where the railroad is.
Kenny, if this is denied, how soon can any part of this group come back or any part of this district and work things out and refile a new application?
They can come back. They decide what the size of the district is. The property owners that want to form a district for a particular area 100% could come back as quickly as they can do it.
I would ask you this, Mr. Bowman, if you... Rather than deny it, I am here as an applicant. I'm trying... You see, I can't hear anymore. I'm trying not to... I don't practice law anymore. We... I talked... He gave us a week. I talked to Dennis. And I was going to get him down here so you would have somebody that practices kind of law that would know... Could work something out, maybe. Dennis was going to help us up to Wednesday and he had a conflict. So that gave us just... Like I say, we only found out about this on the 1st of October when Eric Grohl wrote a letter. So rather than do that, give Mr. Blalock an opportunity to get somebody that could talk to the city and possibly resolve this somewhere or another rather than just, you know, the engineering has been done, the $3,500 or whatever has been paid. It's been a... Give us an opportunity to, you know, to give...
Mr. McKee, I think I get to just your argument, but I think at this point in time, the call is such that even if we took your protest, the ones that we don't have as far as legal protest today, we've got a call so close that I'm not willing to make it in your favor. I think it's time to come back and make reapplication and take care of this case today. So I'm going to move for denial at this time, this case.
Mayor, before we vote, I'd like to... We have another person that's signed up to speak too. I want to give them an opportunity.
I'm Ron Blalock, 14920 North Henni Road. Jones address, Oklahoma City limits. I want to tell you I appreciate the time that you have spent on this issue. I know that it's been a contentious thing for you guys and me. This is going to happen someday. I may not be alive to see it, but it will happen because it's the right thing to do. It's the right thing for Oklahoma City. It is the right thing for the people that own property in that area. And so I know it's going to be done someday. And I do appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ron. Well, we have a motion to deny in a second. Is there any other comments or questions on this item before we vote on item 8I? All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to make a couple of comments. One is something we haven't got to yet is the... The original application is flawed. I think the... I talked to Dan about it and I believe the original application is flawed so that it is wrong in and of itself. It didn't contain some language that needs to be in it. And I think that probably in and of itself is the probably grounds for denial at this point. However, I would... I do agree with Mr. Blalock with regard to the fact that this is probably something that is at some point in time is going to happen. But I think further, something... This has brought up something I've never seen before. And this is... When I say I haven't seen before, that goes back a long time on this horseshoe. But I have never seen this aspect of it used to deny it. The... I've never seen that before. I'm not... I don't agree with Sam that that part of it is enough to deny it. But I think with the combination of that and the fact that the city attorney's office says it's still at 53% means we can't pass it today. Plus the fact that the application's flawed means that I think they do have to start over. I think the statute is flawed. And I think we ought to look at asking for the statute to be changed. This is a ridiculous statute. I think Eric would agree with me on that. You could... And he's representing the other side of it. I mean, the way this thing could happen, this could go on forever. A guy could take one lot, divide it into 10 owners. Now he's got 10 votes. I mean, that makes... That is... That leads to an absolutely ridiculous conclusion. And that's some of the machinations that's gone on this last week. We find an estate now owns half interest in a property possibly. And so it... Nobody's... So there's no probate. So there's no personal representative of the estate to sign the protest or therefore it didn't. That's a ridiculous way to have to decide.
Is this state law you're talking about?
Yes.
I agree with Councilman White. It's a statute that lacks clarity as far as procedure is concerned. I mean, there's no question but that if a majority of the individual owners object, that you lack jurisdiction to enact it. And that's the case here, so it has to be denied. Also, the original petition's defective. But the statute could be improved upon. In fact, Skip and I were talking about this morning, that one of the things that should be on your legislative agenda, I think, is a clarification of how you should proceed under this statute. Because as somebody just said, you know, there's all these machinations going on. And at some point, the voting must end and the decision has to be made. But what this statute leads to is people going out and trying to turn protesters around and buy their land, which has occurred. And so it's not the best statute. It hasn't been used very much in recent years, if I recall. So this one needs to be denied. And one other thing, if there are improvements to be made in that area, they should be made by consensus, it seems to me, if people can sit down and decide what streets need to be paved and what don't. And that did not occur in this instance. So we'd appreciate it if you'd deny it.
I don't want to... I don't want it to be left on... Without saying that I think the statute itself is so flawed that this is... This case... This particular case with this... With basically, if you get somebody like Dennis on the other side of this thing could be a career case for two people because you could spend the rest of your life dividing these lots up into different numbers of owners and then you'd be back and forth forever on it.
Exactly.
Certainly, that's not what the statute intended. But that's literally what it says. And so I think... I don't think... I hate this... I've known Ron a long time and I would... If there's any way I could do something to help the situation here, I'd frankly do it. We've been friends for a long time. But that doesn't have anything to do with what I have to do today. I just don't see how I can vote for it. I think the petition was flawed and I think this situation is that our lawyers are telling us 53% of the people protest. And so I don't think we have a choice. But I'm on the legislative committee. I'm going to ask that the legislative committee look into a clarification on this statute. Because if we do intend to use it, we've got to have a better way to do it. It's got to be a better tool than this. This is not... This is not working.
All right. We have a motion to deny. So a yes vote is to deny the claim. Everybody ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Well, on item 8J, I understand we do not need executive session? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Item 8J, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8K, I understand we do need executive session. Is that correct? All right. We have a motion in a second to move item 8K to executive session. That item passes. Item 8L, this claim's recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8L? We have one person that has signed up. Matthew Myers? Matthew, we will need you to repeat your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Matthew Myers. 8009 West Lake Shore Drive. I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to speak today. On the night of 5/16 of this year, I incurred some damage to my home from a sewer main backup. I notified the city that night. They came out. They advised me that the main line on the city-owned end was plugged with mud. Apparently, they fixed the problem. And... But I had sewer that backed up and essentially flooded my house. It was pretty disgusting. I have carpet damage. I incurred cost in disinfection, dehumidifying underneath parquet floor, and me name it. And I asked for a little over $1,700 in claim. Filed a claim with the city. I was then notified later by the city attorney that they were going to recommend denial of the claim. I would ask the council to not take their advice and to please pay for the damages which were incurred. The city claims that under... The city attorney claimed that under Oklahoma State statute, they're not liable. They tried to claim that I could not prove negligence on the city's part. However, I asked for records of their line maintenance and they said that the entire five years going back that they keep records, that line has never received any preventative maintenance. There's been no inspection, anything that can be proved that the city is fulfilling its obligation to maintain its infrastructure. And under the Oklahoma Supreme Court, McKellips versus St. Francis Hospital, it states that a city is liable or that a claim it can claim a pre-fascial case of negligence if the duty owed by the defendant to protect the plaintiff from injury. I think the city has a duty to protect me from injury. There was a failure of this... Failure to properly exercise or perform that duty. No maintenance, no checks, no... Anything was done to this sewer line that the city can claim. And the plaintiff's injuries are approximately caused by the defendant's failure to exercise that duty. I think it is clear that the city did... That maintenance department did fail to exercise that duty. However, they also... The city attorney also claims that under Oklahoma City versus Romano, municipality is not held liable for damages caused from sewer backup unless the municipality had prior notice of an actual or constructive of a nuisance of defect, meaning they had to have been told that there's a defect prior to the damage. Well, I understand that law does provide a loophole for the city to deny this claim. However, it does not oblige the city to do that. It does not require them to do that. And I don't find that law pretty much is unethical and unfair. How am I supposed to know as a private citizen that there's a prior defect to the main sewer main underneath my home? I have... There's no legitimate or reasonable way for me to know that. And to me, prior notification came when I incurred damages from a defective piece of the city's infrastructure. Then I notified the city. That was their prior notification. And that's pretty much my case. And I'd ask for damages to be awarded to me, please.
Matthew, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
I think we get some advice from our legal counsel here. Typically, in these cases, as sensitive as we are to your issues and sensitive we are to your plight, a lot of times, our legal counsel advises us that we do not have the discretion to pay these claims or we could be held liable of violation of state law. Let's see if there's any exception here.
In this case, there was no prior notice of any problem with this line. And Mr. Myers' notification was after the fact, after the backup had occurred. So we, again, did not have any prior notice.
So although we're sorry that the facts are what they are, this council does not have discretion to play the claim based on the facts that you presented and based on our legal advice?
I never heard her advise that you don't have discretion. She simply said that you did not have prior notification.
Do we have discretion to pay this claim?
The case law says unless we have prior notice and an opportunity to repair, there is no liability.
Okay. Do we have prior notice?
We do not have prior notice.
However, again, she did not state that you have no discretion. You still have discretion.
You have no discretion to pay the claim.
Our legal counsel says we have no discretion to play the claim.
Can you explain that to me? Why do you not have discretion?
Because we did not have notice of the defect in the line. It's the Oklahoma City versus Romano case. We have to have prior notice, actual or constructive, of a nuisance or defect in the sewer line for the city to be legally liable for it.
I understand that, sir.
If you think the law is something different, you could take it to small claims court.
I do understand that portion of the law. I think I laid that out. However, again, I don't see where the city council does not have discretion. I understand where it has a loophole to hide behind the law. However, this law does not state that the city has to deny. I still think there's discretion here. The city's infrastructure caused me harm. I would really like... I'm not asking for millions of dollars. I'm simply asking for what was actually damaged.
There's a taxpayers' lawsuit statute that if the city council pays a claim that the city's not liable for, 10 taxpayers can demand that the city recover the amount. And if the city doesn't do it, then potentially the mayor and council are personally liable for the amount. So that's really why they have no discretion to pay it.
Okay, I can understand that. But I understand you're going to recommend deny to deny it. I think that's an unethical decision. And I think the city is looking out for its own interest and not for the interest of its citizens. And that this law is unjust and should be repealed or overturned in some manner.
We have sought it to have it repealed. We've just not been successful.
Okay. But this is why I believe that the rabbi earlier prayed for faith in government. And this is why people don't have faith in government.
Matthew, I'm sorry, we couldn't help you.
Mayor?
Yes?
You know, I don't think there's anyone up here that would like to do this. But with the idea that we would be... We would run the risk of taking three times as much as your claim out of our own pocket if this was... I don't see how you can... I think that's unethical, if you want to use that word since you've already used it once. I think that's not responsive to the situation. I mean, you're saying because you didn't get it your way, you think we're unethical. I don't think there's any one of us that wouldn't like to find a way to do this. We have talked about this over and over and over. We've looked at all kinds of ways. We've gone to the state insurance commissioner and asked for the authority to permit us to be an insurer against this. And we've been told we can't do that. So for you to come up here on one claim and say we're unethical because you didn't get it your way, I find that a little bit difficult. I think that's what's wrong with government. I think people have an expectation of government that's far beyond what it ought to be. A selfish expectation that because you didn't get it your way, you're wrong. And I would tell you that this council has invested hours, 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 hours upon hours trying to figure out a way to solve this problem. And we haven't. Councilman Bowman personally has spent the last eight years trying to figure this problem out. And we don't have a solution yet. And we would work on it. And I think if there's a way we could pay it today, we'd all be willing to do it. But I'm afraid we can't. And if that makes us unethical in your mind, well, then so be it.
Mr. White, I apologize if you took my comments to be a personal attack on you. However, it was not.
Well, that's what it was.
I'm simply speaking to the situation, that the law that exists right now is unethical. It's unjust. And I'm not making any personal attacks on any of you at all. I understand.
Ethics is personal. Ethics is not corporate. Ethics is personal. It goes to individuals. So when you say people are unethical, you're talking about me. You're talking about the mayor. You're talking about all these other people sitting here. I don't take that lightly. I don't take this job lightly. I don't take my ethics lightly. And I don't take all the hard work that the people on this horseshoe have done to try to make this right. We agree with you. It's not right. It's not right. It's not right. There ought to be a better way. But we haven't been able to find that answer.
Okay, then we are in agreement that it's not right. However, I'm not personally attacking you, sir. This is no way, shape, or form of personal attacking you. I was simply asking.
Can I make that as an apology?
Yes, I will apologize if you took that as a personal attack. However, it was not a personal attack.
Matthew, thanks for coming down. We're sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Ready to play the claims or deny the claims on item 8L?
Yeah.
All right, cast your votes. Those claims are denied. Go to item 9. These are claims recommended for approval. Anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under item 9? All right, cast your votes. Claim is approved. Go to item 10. Item 10A is a resolution approving a registration fee for the National League of Cities. Brian also, I think, wants to check in on this item, too. Councilman Kelly is the one making the request. And it looks like Councilman Ryan wants to speak also. Brian, why don't you speak first?
I don't remember the date, but probably about a year ago, I put forth a resolution restricting all travel for the council. And under the current circumstance, I've checked with the city manager. I think there's probably time that we lift that. Sales tax is going in the right direction, and we probably need to loosen that up. I know that the city manager has spoken to -- there's probably time for some of the staff to be able to make travel as well. So I would like next week for a resolution to be brought forward that would remove that travel restriction and allow the council and the staff to travel as needed.
We can do that. Okay.
Your honor, I take exception to what my colleague said. I think this sends the wrong message to our citizens and our city employees, that the good times are here, the bad times are over. I think that's a euphoric sense that we should not adopt yet. When we adopted this resolution, everybody was well aware of the fact that we weren't talking about significant dollars. We were talking about symbolism and leadership. And I don't think we ought to abandon that at this particular point in time. I talked to the city manager yesterday, and their travel restrictions are still in place. They've not been lifted yet. And I think we, as city council, have an opportunity to continue our leadership role by not rolling this back at this time. And at some point in time, when our finances improve to a certain point, then we'll be able to lift this restriction. But I don't think we're there yet. And I think we ought to keep this in place. And I would be opposed to this exception to the resolution that we have on our books right now.
All right. Councilman Kelly, you want to speak on this? We have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution.
You know, and I want to make sure that this is clear. I am not asking for the city of Oklahoma City to pay for travel. We are a member of the National League of Cities. And I have asked, what is the membership cost to that organization? And I believe it's over $25,000 a year that we pay as a member to a national organization. And since my inception on this council, I'm aware of two or three of the members of this council who have served on committees on this national organization on behalf of the city of Oklahoma City. And in the short period of time that I've been on the council, I've been nominated to serve on two committees, two committees that I have a great amount of passion for, that I have worked diligently in this city on behalf. And to simply pay for the registration, to attend a national organization that we pay $25,000 a year to be a member of, and we never have a member set in the place representing the city of Oklahoma City? To me, it's kind of like, why are we spending any money to be members of these organizations? You know, we have people that lobby on my behalf from a national level for funds that benefit the citizens of the city of Oklahoma City, but yet and still, we can't have someone sitting at a national table that is a part of that lobby and also on behalf of the city of Oklahoma City and as a leader of this city in our position and our capacity? And then we sit here, we talk about laws that should be changed, that's either national or state, but yet and still, we pay money to be a member of those organizations, but we don't engage in the process for the outcome of delivery that benefits our city. And so that's the only request that I'm making, is the registration. I am not asking -- I have traveled. I can afford to pay for my own travel. The registration is on behalf of the city of Oklahoma City. And every meeting that I have attended on behalf of this city that has been reported back, you can clearly show that I have been to the meetings. I have done my work diligently on behalf of this city. And, you know, this whole issue about the symbolism of this whole budget issue, when is anyone going to have the knowledge that now is the time to do something different? I mean, who has the magic number that says, okay, we've reached this number, and now we can take the budget restriction off in reference to travel? I mean, when does the number come? There wasn't anything in the resolution that stated that when we get to a certain capacity or when we get to a certain percentage of sales, then, you know, we can have trouble. And the thing that really is offensive about this whole issue is that, you know, I believe from the beginning that the travel was specifically stated that for purposes of business on behalf of the city of Oklahoma City and to do diligent work on behalf of this city, not to go someplace to play and have fun and go on field trips. And I think that every member on this council is prudent enough and is fiscal enough in their thinking to understand that if there is a serious issue of need on behalf of the city of Oklahoma City, why are we not at the table? And, you know, so that's my position about it. And I just think that, you know, in reference to all the money that we pay out for membership in these organizations, we pay almost $90,000 for the National League of Cities. And we sit here today, and we have citizens who can't understand, and I clearly couldn't understand it. And this is something that, you know, if we probably was more engaged with an organization that we pay almost $100,000 of membership for, this issue would have been changed a long time ago.
I'll take that as a second. And Pat?
Your honor, I just would say, I want to congratulate my colleague, that he did, in his resolution, clearly indicate he was going to be responsible for all his expenses. There's no question that there's been any ask, request by Councilman Kelly to pay for his expenses going up there. And I know I've done the same thing. I've attended two meetings, paid for my expenses over there. So I compliment Councilman Kelly. The fact of whether it's a good idea or a bad idea to belong to the National League of Cities, whether it's a good idea or a bad idea to attend these meetings, is something we discussed previously when we put this motion, this initial resolution in place. And I think that the membership in NLC, the membership in the Oklahoma Municipal League are things that we legitimately should discuss in opus, whether we should continue those sort of things. We have a resolution in effect that says we won't -- city council and the mayor won't travel to city -- and I would think that as generous as Mr. Kelly's offer is, pay for zone expenses, the registration fee is part of that.
So you're saying if the event were here, we shouldn't pay the resolution?
If the event was here, there would be no expense involved.
Well, there would be a registration.
Well, then, I think then we should look at that. But I would think that that's not travel. So we might want to look at that again. To answer Mr. Kelly's question about when is it going to be lifted, I think the city manager will tell us when. We've paid some of the monies that we've taken out of our funds for this initial, this year's budget, pay that back, replace some of the positions that we eliminated, and get back on a more normal plane. We've cut city services in reaction to the budget situation we have right now. And I don't think we ought to loosen up on our frugality until we've restored those positions, or at least some of those positions, and we are back on an even field. And I just think if we move forward at this point in time, we're premature.
Okay. Larry, and then Pete.
Yeah, I'd just like to share my personal view, and y'all can take exception to it if you'd like. That's perfectly all right. I do not see the paying of the registration fee as a waiver of the previously passed resolution not to travel. I see those as two separate issues. And so if this were a request to pay the transportation and hotel, I would vote no. But because it's just to pay for the registration fee, and the councilman has indicated he's going to pick up the other expenses, I'm going to vote yes for this particular one right here, because, again, I don't see this as a waiver of the previously passed ban on travel. If we come back with a resolution taking that ban on travel off next week, I'm going to go on record right now as saying I'm going to vote against that, because I don't think this is the time to release travel. But I don't see the registration fee. You can take exception to me. But I don't see that as impacting the travel.
Okay, Pete?
Well, I agree with almost everything Larry said, except I don't think -- I do think that this is an exception, but I think it's a reasonable one. I think it's a reasonable exception. If he's going to pay for the other expenses, I think it's reasonable we pay the registration. I think -- I don't see it as a loophole, if you will, to use the guy that was talking to us before's language. I don't see it as a loophole in that resolution. I think, see, if he wants to pay the expenses, then it's a good bargain for the city to make an exception in this case and do it. I might vote for it also. And I probably would agree with Larry, that I would probably vote against waiving the restriction. I think we're so far from being back to where we were before the fall that that's a decision that probably needs to wait a while.
I just think that at some point, we have to return to business as usual. And with MAPS 3, we're about to spend hundreds of millions of dollars of taxpayer money, and there's going to be some travel that's necessary, some due diligence that's going to be necessary with a lot of best practices that are out there. I'll take the senior wellness centers as a perfect example. I think our senior wellness subcommittee needs to get on a bus and go to Little Rock. And I think council people ought to be encouraged to go. That's the type of trip that would be restricted under this current resolution that we have in place. I don't think this is an extravagant council. I don't think our travel has exceeded normal guidelines. And I think at some point, it's just not prudent, under the guise of frugality, to think that we shouldn't have some level of travel when we have hundreds of millions of dollars that are coming down the pipeline to be spent on MAPS 3 projects. We've got some big decisions to make, and we need all the information we can get. And that includes staff, and it includes elected officials. So...
Well, I guess that's a discussion we can have, but...
It's a valid point, your honor. But I think we...
Excuse me, it confuses the issue here.
Okay. Well, we'll discuss it next week. Sounds like Brian's going to bring a resolution forward, and we can pass on the discussion then. But right now, we have a motion and a second on item 10A. A yes vote is to approve the resolution for that registration fee, and the vote is eight to one. Item 10B is a briefing on the truancy program. Councilman Bowman?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just be a few minutes. The truancy unit or chief city could stand up and do this, but I think in their humble way, it wouldn't perhaps come across in a way that I'd like to leave the council with having run on the truant ride-along last week. Councilman Ryan and I are serving on the strategic planning committee of the Oklahoma City School District. At one meeting and the next meeting, we'll look at the biggest challenges facing the district, school district. I contend that one of them is getting truant kids in school, and after we get them in school, keeping them in school. And you'll see here in a minute with the numbers as to why I feel so strongly about that. Our new truancy program in partnership with the public schools is addressing this truant issue head-on. In January, we put on six full-time truant officers, divide up the district in six sections. In the spring semester this past year, there were 6,500 truant kids. And you take that out of a school district of 39,000 to 40,000, that's a significant number of kids. And when I say truant in the spring semester, that's with five or more truant absences, unexcused absences. These are not call-ins by parents. These are unexcused absences. So we have that number of kids at any one time in this past spring semester out on unexcused absence. During the spring semester, our first full-time semester with these six officers, our truant officers contacted 2,170 of those students, those truant students. The way the truant kids, the way we get information on them is every Monday, each school compiles its truant students, five or more truancies, and through a new system, interface system with the city of Oklahoma City, database connected to the school system, we get very current figures on those truant kids. So pick up all the truant kids through that system every Monday morning. Last Thursday, Phil Horning, who's a member of the Oklahoma City School Board, and I did a ride-along with two officers, Lieutenant Paco Baldurama, probably all had opportunity to visit with him. Nobody any better. He's head of the unit. And Officer Angela Shields, who we recognized a week ago here at council, went along with us. I just want to highlight, and very quickly, five truant visits where we found kids and/or parents at home. Now, remember, last week was fall break on Thursday, so they were not in school. Five truant visits. Eighth-grade boy, we visit, being bullied. Last incident was he had been burnt by, I think it was a cigarette lighter at a bus stop. It was just getting to that severity. Talked with the parent there. Parents trying to work things out with the schools, but was hesitant to send the kid back. And I felt was very reaffirmed and reinforced by the officer's visit. And that kind of visit, the attitude of these police officers in each and every visit was remarkably different, depending on the situation. This situation, obviously, was one crying out for help, looked for all the help they could get. And the officers were very listened well, very helpful. And Mr. Horning, being present, said it was one of his schools, that he would follow that up himself. Second visit, found at home, seventh-grade boy who really acted very nonchalant about going to school. His mother wasn't home, but there was someone in the house with him when the officers were talking with him, and must have immediately called his mother. He was polite. He just, you know, wasn't all that excited about going to school and didn't really have good explanation as to why he wasn't going. His mother showed up before we left, and she couldn't have been just more encouraged the fact that the police officers had come to visit. She's having an issue of, he said, anxiety and depression with his kid, trying to get a diagnosis in a way that he can get assigned some special education or special attention, and hasn't resolved that yet. And any help she can get, she was just most grateful for. A seventh-grade boy, I think he was Pakistani. We couldn't understand hardly a word from the kid himself. Mother spoke no English at all. He was, we found out, he's been missing the bus. We did learn that much from the boy. And while we were there, a worker, caseworker from Catholic Charities showed up coincidentally at the same time. And she's been following the family, as we learned out from her. They're a resettlement family that Catholic Charities is working with. So, again, she was encouraged to see that the police officers were making the visit. That just helped reinforce the purpose that she was there for, and how to get this kid in school and make the impression on him that you've got to get the school bus one way or another, you've got to get the special English classes, and get just the range of issues that we encountered in this one morning. A ninth-grade high school boy, this kid just didn't seem to care. It wasn't laps of days, he go, he just didn't care about going to school and didn't want to go to school. Officers in this instance, and their mother was not home, but we found... Officers in this instance, and the mother was not home, but we found out there was an adult in the house. She didn't speak, but she turned out to be his aunt. And they got very, changed the tune entirely, very direct with this kid. Paco just got right in his face, not mean, but very direct and confrontive, and talked to him about consequences and where this kid's going to end up, and where other kids like him have ended up, in a way that the aunt just, without even being part of the conversation, stood up and she said, "I'm going to get his mother on the phone right now. Try to get her here before you leave." Well, she didn't get there before we left. A very different approach with a kid out of school for a very different reason. And the last child was a fourth-grade girl. Mother finally let us in the apartment, little hesitant to let us in, but we finally got in the apartment, and hers, she started off by making all excuses why she works late at night, by the time she gets home, it's time for the kid to get up, her fourth-grade daughter, and her fourth-grade daughter has trouble getting up in the morning. She was just, her mother said, just lazy, doesn't get up. Trying to, I guess, blame the daughter. And the more they talk with her, the two officers talk with her, about consequences for this little girl who's six unexcused absences, and where she might, where mom might end up in court, the matter of that mother just shifting almost on a dime in accepting responsibility thing before we left. "I understand that she needs to be in school, and it is my responsibility, and I'm going to see to it that she's in school." Just attitude turned on a dime. And I think, again, it had to do with the way these officers addressed in respect, but very businesslike, matter-of-fact in every situation, but a different kind of approach in every one. I just think this truancy intervention program is addressing one of the major challenges for the school district, and the first semester results are very promising. But what the results show is that on the follow-up of these twenty-one-hundred-and-seventy students this summer, home visits decreased truancy by sixty-one percent. Now, that was, that evaluation was done this summer after the semester. Excellent follow-up and reduction of truancy in that time. I want to say that Phil Hornig and I were just, couldn't have been more impressed with these two Oklahoma City police officers, and the way they handled themselves, the seriousness in which they take this business, a passion, Mr. Kelly talks about passion, the passion they have for this work and this assignment that they have. It's just something that I would like all the citizens to be able to see and understand and hear, what the extent that we're going to with kids out of school. Understanding, this isn't, you know, this isn't just about helping the school district out. They explained to us, and Chief City explains, every one of these kids that we don't get back in, it's probably going to be one of his problems down the road. So we're talking about preventing crime down the road. But I think we have an intervention program in place here that is just, with the results in the first semester, may be one of the biggest interventions in terms of problems and challenges that this Oklahoma City School District has. And I just appreciated the opportunity to go along with these two folks and their candor and their seriousness and their, just the way of taking care of business and handling the job that we would all be proud of.
Sam, thanks for that report. That was, that was good. Other items from council? Gary?
Well, contrary to the rumors that's floating around, those that can see me, I'm not dressed up for one of the haunted houses that's going on right now. But for all of you young people out there that think that it's crazy when the adults talk about sunscreen and the use of it, and if you don't do it in later years, this is what you've got to put up with from time to time. So I just caution everybody to put on that sunscreen and wear your hats. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh-huh. Sam? Larry?
Well, I had a similar experience yesterday, but fortunately, I only had three places burned off with no Band-Aids. But I would second what Gary said, and I can think back as a youth, where I thought it was cool to just lay out in the sun, hour on hour, to get this golden tan for purposes that I would go into. And the price you pay later on is not worth that effort. So put on your sunscreen and be wise, so you're not like Gary and I.
Pete? Brian?
Well, I want to thank not only the city, but OGN E and the state for working together on the light at One Hundred and Thirty-Fourth and Portland. It's up, it's functional. It got the attention from a resident who rode into the day Oklahoman, and I can't remember the gentleman's name that does all the traffic stuff in his article, but he did contact Stuart Chai, and Stuart did a fabulous job explaining to him what went on. And, but it is, it is functional, it's working well, and I think it was entirely appropriate for that area. So again, just thanks everybody for...
Initiation?
Well, I know I initiated it, but after that, you know, we all sit up here and get the glory for the things that happen, and the reality is that there's a lot of work behind the scenes, of people who work incredibly hard, and it wouldn't have happened without those people. So they give, they get the credit, and just a big appreciation from me and all the residents that live out there in that area.
Meg?
I guess quickly, just like to offer resounding congratulations to the folks that put on the Ghouls Gone Wild Parade. Bill Bliklin and Linda just did an amazing job. There were so many folks downtown on Saturday night. I stopped by Ermas yesterday, and they sold four thousand hamburgers over the span of a couple of hours. It was the biggest day they've ever had. And so if anybody doesn't think that this kind of an event results in economic development, they're really wrong. But there were seventy entrants in the parade. It was really an exciting evening in downtown Oklahoma City. And so I guess hats off to Burns Harkes for bringing the idea to Oklahoma City. It is a very creative, interesting event, and it just continues to grow and be a bigger success.
Skip?
Yes, I would like to acknowledge Wildwood Hills' height under the leadership of Ms. Jackie Jordan. The Neighborhood Association has received a $5,000 grant from the Oklahoma City Community Foundation through the Margaret Annis Boyd's Trust, and it's for the beautification of Dolphlin Wharton Park. They have, I believe, planted something like twenty-some trees in the park, and they are getting assistance from this grant that will help them maintain the beautification of the park. And they just celebrated this last month, the fortieth anniversary for the Neighborhood Association. And would also like to acknowledge the fact that Ms. Jackie Jordan, who's the past president, is one of the finalists for the Good Neighbor Award for 2010, 2011. And mentioning parks, I look at this, the report this morning, and it shows nine swimming pools locations in the City of Oklahoma City that have been closed, and of course, the parks have been, the swimming pools have been removed. I know this is early, but I don't think it's too early. I continue to address this issue in my community and I think in other parts of this city. The issue of aquatics in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, it's to the point where we don't have, and I don't think we'll ever get back to the issue of these small neighborhood parks having swimming pools. And it's obvious that you still have an abundance of children in the community, that aquatics is something that's very important, I think, as far as growing up and as far as a life skill in itself. And I continue to advocate the need for regional family aquatic centers in the city. And I know we have Early Wine and Northwest...
Will Rogers.
Will Rogers. And I think that if we can start putting this as a master agenda of addressing this issue for the other two proportions of the city, I think we would go a long ways as for serving the needs of children and families for exercise, for learning how to swim, and overall health in itself. And I think this is just, you know, something that, you know, along with the wellness program, that the aquatics program could be a very key feature as far as quality of life for all of our citizens. And I look at the Aquatic Center in Edmond, Oklahoma, and it's amazing the number of people that go from Oklahoma City to the Aquatic Center in Edmond. And every day, the pool is absolutely full. And I think we miss out on a lot of opportunity to provide for activities for our children and adults as it relates to aquatics. And so I would ask that we continue to, and I know me and the manager have talked about this, and I think that, you know, the other issue in reference to parks is, you know, I believe that we don't spend enough time emphasizing locations in our communities as it relates to nice parks. I've been working with our Parks Director, Mr. Wilson Hunt, and we've identified some parks in Ward Seven that are just nothing but vacant land. I mean, there's absolutely no usage to them. They're just being maintained, no use out of them at all. But I think in reference to the inventory of parks, we could identify areas of each part of this city that could be an icon of that part of the city as far as a nice park. And so I think this is something that should be also attended to in a very serious way of showing how we can pride ourselves with some of our municipal parks that really stand out and maybe get rid of some of these parks that's not being used at all.
All right. Pat?
Your Honor, thank you. I just wanted to thank you again for the opportunity to be part of the long-range planning process for Oklahoma City schools. I think great opportunity. Thank Council, excuse me, Councilman Bowman for his report on truancy. Obviously, that's an important problem that schools need to address. And I look forward to working with them on some strategic issues that may help improve the entire school district. Thank you.
Should be a good process. All right. City manager reports?
Mr. Mayor, last week at the COPPA meeting, we had a presentation, actually purchased some new parking control systems and improvements for the parking garage. And these, this new technology has a lot of uses that we haven't had in the past, so I thought it'd be appropriate to have Rick Kane and Debbie Holtzclaw come down this morning and talk about, a little bit about the plans for the garage and some of the things that are on the horizon. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to come to you this morning and brief you on a new parking access and revenue control system that, as the city manager said, was approved last week by the COPPA Board of Trustees. Debbie Holtzclaw is with me this morning. Debbie is actually the division manager for our parking operation, and she did the lion's share of the work, both in putting together the RFP and then negotiating the contract with our equipment supplier. This was a significant part of the planned improvements that we have for our garage system. Utilizing current technology, the new equipment or the new system will afford several advantages over our current equipment. Particularly, it will expand the payment options that are available to parkers within our system. It will also increase our audit controls. And finally, it will also enhance our special event and hotel parking options. So this morning, I just want to very quickly run through a series of slides here to kind of hit the high points of what this new equipment will provide for us. First, it provides additional entry controls for the garages beyond our current ticket or proximity card. The new system is capable of reading magnetic bar strips or passes. It also can read barcodes. And it also has what's called automatic vehicle identification technology, which is similar, which is identical to what is used on the turnpikes or the pipe pass, so that when a car approaches the garage, it can be identified immediately as something that's authorized to enter the garage and therefore pull on in without having to stop, roll down the window, and then manually deal with some kind of entry control. We also have the, opposed to just relying solely on cashiers, we're also going to make available to our parkers pay-in-line opportunities for both cash and credit card. The credit card processing will be in real time, and in order to make sure that our parkers are protected, the equipment has been validated with the most current credit card industry security standards. And one special feature that we like particularly about this company is whether you're using a ticket or a credit card, when you insert that item in the payment slot, it makes no difference what direction you put it in there. It will read the card automatically, so that it should make it very easy for people who use the system to use this equipment. We'll also be introducing pay-on-foot options for the parking system. This will allow people to pay before they get into the exit lanes, and we hope that this will speed up exiting out of the garage. Our intention is to have three of these units located at the Cox Convention Center. We'll have them close to the elevators in the parking garage. And then we also plan to have two units at the Santa Fe Garage. We'll have one in the main elevator tower, and then we'll also have a second one on the Skywalk that connects the garage to the Renaissance Hotel and the Cox Convention The new system will also provide for special tickets and validations that can be provided in advance of special events that we have in the downtown area, or for daily validations, which is really a convenience that we provide for our business customers who like to pay for the parking for their clients. In both the Santa Fe and the Century Center garages, we're going to be installing what's known as vehicle counting systems to aid in the entry into these garages. Both have what are called double helixes, which is where you drive around in a circular pattern when you're approaching a floor in the garage. And those of you who've parked in either the Century Center or the Santa Fe Garage know that when you're in the entry ramps and you're driving, it's next to impossible to be able to see what kind of spaces are available on those floors. So with the vehicle counting system, it really should speed up entry and make it much easier to identify whether there is space available on a particular floor. And the other nice feature about this, it really also provides for the future use of remote signage, so that if someone enters downtown, they'll actually be able to see what spaces are available in a garage before they even get near that garage. When we were negotiating our parking agreement with The Thunder, one of the desires of the team was to be able to use either the game or event ticket as a way to validate parking by reading a barcode. That was something we didn't have the capacity to do. The new system will actually give us that capacity. And so we will be working with both The Thunder and The Barons for this next year to try to provide such a system using wireless technology. Customers also have the, will also have the opportunity to purchase event parking online. It will use real-time space availability, so our parking attendants will know what number of spaces are actually available, even though the garage may not be full at that particular time. And the system also offers a significant enhancement to our current way that we control hotel parking with hang tags. It really offers several advantage, there are several options to the hotel. Probably the most significant is the fact that the hotel could actually, a guest at the hotel could actually use their key card for their room entry and use that also at the garage. So during the duration of the stay, they can use their hotel key card to get in and out of the garage. We'll be working with the various hotels that actually use our garages for their parking operations to determine which of the multiple options are really the best fit for them, as well as the best fit for our parking system. And finally, this slide really identifies what we think are some of the key benefits that'll be realized with the equipment. We anticipate delivery of the equipment by the end of this calendar year. We'll be phasing in the installation on a garage-by-garage basis, so we anticipate that the full installation really will not occur until next June. You know, part of the reason that that takes so long is the fact that we're going to have to coordinate the installation. At the same time, we're actually in full operation within the garages, so it really does draw out the installation process. The total cost of the system was a little bit less than $1.9 million. This was something that we did include in this year's operating budget for the parking system. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. If anything, just go ahead.
Yep. Pat?
I hate to ask an unrelated question, but I've got Rick here, I'm going to take advantage of that. We are looking forward, we as a society in the United States, to the advent of electric cars a big way the next year or two. There's several major manufacturers going to bring electric cars. Was there any thought given, Rick, to putting charging stations in our garages?
Yes, we have. And Debbie, this is her expertise more than mine, but I can tell you that we actually have investigated a couple of options that are out there in the marketplace right now to see what... marketplace right now to see what it would take. Trying to get better information in terms of what is the cost for charging a unit as it sits there, so we can figure out a way as, you know, is it insignificant, it's something we absorb, or is it something we pass on, and if we do pass it on, in what way, and trying to ensure that we got the proper controls to measure the amount. But it is, it is something that we're looking at right now. We've been looking at it from the standpoint of not only in garages, but potentially on the street as well.
Okay. Yeah. Brian?
Is the $1.9 million that you spent, is that just a pure expense, or do you have some calculation on payback? I mean, will that money ever be recouped, or is it just a convenience expense that you're incurring?
We didn't do a payback calculation on it. I mean, it's really a benefit to our parkers and the parking system. I think, again, not only does it help the users of our system in terms of the flexibility that they have, but I think two key things that came up there. I said it as increased audit controls. One of our big issues that we have right now is how we deal with the hotel parkers and making sure that that's handled in a proper fashion. So we anticipate that, yeah, there is actually some revenue gain that we will get here by having tighter controls. Plus, the system really provides real-time management information, so it'll make us even more aware on a very readily basis what's going on in our garage system so we can react to things. So there is this, there is this benefit both to the user and to us, not necessarily that we're going to get 100% payback on this, but it gives us so much more flexibility. And as I said, when we're negotiating with the Thunder and being able to just read barcodes on passes and make it so much simpler. Now, one of the things that we do anticipate by using the pay-on-foot and also the pay-in-lane opportunities is that we will not need to have as many cashiers in the garages at all times, particularly, you know, we have to staff to late hours for those garages that have hotel guests, and so there will be an operational dollar cost savings there. We just don't know the magnitude of that. It's going to be a slow introduction here, because people are going to have to get used to using the equipment. We've been, they're so used to just pulling up to a cashier and doing business. So over time, we do anticipate some dollar savings there, but we've not as yet necessarily put a number to that.
Any other questions for Rick? All right. Glad to see in the home of the invention of the parking meter that we're moving into this smart technology. Wonderful to see. Rick, thank you. On the citizens to be heard? All right, we have executive session, we'll be back.